Good evening. I'm Olivia Thorne, President of the League of Women Voters of Delaware County. And I'd like to start by welcoming everyone to the Delaware County Council Candidate Forum, sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Delaware County. And thank you for coming to learn more about the candidates, their views, and ideas regarding Delaware County government. The League is a nonpartisan political organization, which means we neither support or oppose candidates. We are dedicated to ensuring that all eligible voters have the opportunity and the information to exercise their right to vote. I'd also like to thank Villanova University for hosting this forum and videoing this event, so it can be viewed by others who could not be with us tonight. It is important that all parties and individuals know that the video of this meeting may not be used for partisan political advantage. The complete video must be posted if it is put on a website or used at a meeting. And links to the video will be available at our website, lwddelcopa.org, or lwwradnor.org, or lwwcdc.org. Now, the big thing I wanted to just add in here is, no, we ask you not to have used your cellphones to take pictures and to do any sort of videoing of it. There'll be a very nice copy, and we have cameramen back there to take care of that. But it's, um, this is a way that we can agree, we can approve that no one is going to take part of it and not use the whole video in entirety. Now, I'd like to invite and to introduce Tiffany Griffin, a member from Chester County, who will be our moderator tonight for this forum. And she will now explain the rules and how the debate will go forth. Thank you.
I'm joking. Welcome, everyone. The rules for this evening, you heard the first one, there's going to be absolutely no use of any cellphones. Also, we're going to wait until the very end to do any clapping. And there will be a timer who will signal with a yellow card, and that yellow card for the candidates means that you have a 30-second mark. And the red card is your signal to stop. The ushers will be walking around in the audience to give out index cards, and those index cards are for any questions that you have. No personal questions will be allowed. Again, the League of Women Voters will be recording this event, and this event will be available in its entirety on their website. Once again, welcome to the event. At this time, I would like to introduce the candidates. The candidates met already before this event to decide who's going to start. And we're going to start with the opening statements for the Republican Party.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Mike Morgan. And along with Kelly Colvin and Jim Rath, we are the Republican Candidates for Delaware County Council. On behalf of my team, I would like to first thank Villanova University for hosting this event. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for organizing and moderating this debate. And I'd like to thank our opponents, Monica, Elaine, and Christine, for joining us and putting their names on the ballot for November 5th, and appearing here tonight to join us in discussion, get a little feedback here, about competing visions for governing Delaware County. This is giving a lot of feedback. Jim, Kelly, and I have knocked on over 10,000 doors, and we have visited all 49 municipalities of Delaware County. That's 27 boroughs, 21 townships, and the city of Chester. And we did so multiple times, in spring, the summer, and fall.
The mic is down. You're pointing it out, but it's speakers, and that's what's causing the feedback.
Okay, it was set that way, I guess. Yeah. I don't know about that. It's still giving us feedback.
Well, present all the mics that are picking up here, if you guys are downstairs with the speaker. Can you guys shut? Why not?
Maybe. Technical difficulties. All right. I don't know. We want to keep going. Because Kelly's next. Okay, I'll continue. Hopefully, we won't have the feedback. And so as I was saying, we've knocked on 10,000 doors, we've visited all 49 municipalities of Delaware County. And what we found is that people don't really know what Delaware County does. What they do know is that they receive a tax bill every year. And for the most part, taxes are the first thing that they want to discuss. So we thought it would be a good idea to address the number-one issue on people's minds when it comes to Delaware County and Delaware County Council, and that is taxes. So before this event, we signed a pledge for a no-tax increase for the next four years if we're elected. That would mean that with five people on Delaware County Council, if the three of us were elected, there would be no tax increase for the next four years for the voters to be rest assured there would be no tax increase. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Colvin, and I'm very involved in the special needs world, and I serve as an advocate for that population. Mike is right. We've spoken to a lot of residents, and the number-one issue are taxes. The second issue is the looming reassessment. Delaware County residents, and in particular, our seniors, are very scared of being taxed out of their homes. That's why we're signing on to this pledge. Our opponents may sign on to this pledge as well, but I'll offer a piece of advice, two things I live by. First, actions speak louder than words. Second, a good indicator of someone's future behavior is to look at their past behaviors. All three of our opponents have been or are elected officials. All three of our opponents have raised taxes tremendously in those roles. Specifically, Christine Ruther was the Commissioner for Nether Providence. She raised taxes three out of four years at 22 percent. Elaine Paul Schaefer, as a Radnor Commissioner, raised taxes 17 percent, increased the debt by $51 million, and they even created a rain tax in Radnor. Monica Taylor, who's only been in office for 22 months in Upper Darby, has raised taxes both budget cycles, has increased the debt for an already burdened school district by $6.5 million, with plans to increase that more. Listen, Delaware County government will have some financial challenges in the future. But unlike our opponents, we're not going to reach into your pockets in order to solve those problems.
Good evening. My name is Jim Rath, and I'm a small-business owner who knows what it's like to manage a budget. I have approximately 80 employees who count on me to go to work every day and keep work in front of them, and give them a paycheck weekly to help support their families. I want to be clear, we're not talking about cuts in services. In fact, our platform is an expansion of services. With each expansion, we will explain how we will fund each one of them. It's pretty simple. It starts with a zero-based budgeting, public-private partnerships, working with our state and federal legislators for grants, and also stopping the unfunded mandates that get brought down to the county level. You'll hear from our opponents tonight why you shouldn't vote for us, evil Republicans and reckless allegations of corruption, how you won't get your trash picked up if you're not registered the right way. But that's not, that's not us, and that's just plain not true. You're going to hear the word corruption, and when you hear that, I want you to think about people who have gone to prison. People like Kathleen Cain, Rob McCord, and Seth Williams. Now, that's corruption. We're just three individuals, working for Delaware County, working for no taxes, increase, increase our ability to have strong economic development, openness, and transparency moving forward. We ask for your support tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, Kelly, and Jim. We will now hear from the Democratic Party.
Hello. Is that good? All right. Hi. My name is Monica Taylor. On behalf of the Democratic Slate, I'd like to thank the League for organizing this debate, and Villanova University for hosting us. A little bit about me. I was born in the state of Delaware, but I grew up playing basketball with players from all over Delaware County. I built strong friendships with my teammates, and decided to move to Upper Darby with my husband to raise our family. I am no stranger to hard work. I practiced and trained hard to become a Division I and professional basketball player. I went on to use those skills and experiences to earn my PhD. I'm a professor and undergraduate program director at the University of Sciences, where I train students who are going into various allied health professions. I'm an active community member, and ran for school board because I have two young daughters who will be in the Upper Darby School District for many years to come. As a board member, I have focused on helping our students going directly into the workforce, and have run into several roadblocks. I found myself using other counties' resources to help our children. This is just one of many examples of how Delco is falling behind our neighbors. I'm running for county council together with my slate mates to make sure our county government is providing our residents with the resources and services that they need.
Hello, everyone. I'm Elaine Schaefer, and I'm from Radnor. Welcome to my town. I have lived here for 20 years with my husband, and we raised our three kids here. I served on the commissioners here for eight years, and three of those years I was president. I'm an attorney, and currently, I'm the Executive Director of the Schuylkill River Greenways. I'm running for council because our government has been hijacked by a political party machine that has had absolute power for 150 years. And it is unaccountable, it is corrupt, and it is not transparent, and not fair. We need change, and we need experienced leaders who can see that change through. I bring that experience to the table. My election in Radnor ended decades, generations of single-party rule, and we completely transformed that government. We made it more accountable, more professional, and more transparent. One of the biggest problems that we faced there was terrible financial reporting, much like we have at Delco. We revamped the whole system, and today, Radnor is a model of financial transparency. Even our checkbook is online. Our opponents have put forth a plan and a proposal for transparency. I have actually done it. We need to end this era of Republican rule, under which we pay more in taxes than any of our neighbors, any of them. And we get far less in services. This slate will change that, and we're going to do it without raising your taxes.
Hi. My name's Christine Ruther. I was born and raised in Delaware County. I graduated from Haverford High School. My husband and I have lived in Nether Providence Township for 26 years. All three of our daughters graduated from the Strathhaven High School there. I've been invested in my community. I've served on the Planning Commission. I've been a township commissioner. I've been a Girl Scout leader and a cookie mom for more years than I can count. And I've raised money for first responders. Started a 5K there that ran for 10 years and was the race director the entire time. Professionally, my job is, I'm a tax lawyer and a business lawyer. I have to follow the money. And when you follow the money in Delaware County, you find that it generally leads to the pockets of the Delco GOP and their friends and family. They do it through no-bid contracts. They do it through jobs that pay full-time benefits and wages for part-time work, or sometimes no work at all. And they do it with sweetheart deals that transfer public assets to campaign donors. What this all adds up to is that we pay a lot more in taxes and get a lot less than our neighboring counties. You're going to hear, as you've already heard, that we've raised taxes. But in truth, we already pay really high taxes. We're going to be able to do the kinds of service improvements we want to do without raising taxes because we won't have to. We're going to be reprioritizing our spending. I came back to Delaware County to build my adult life here after having grown up here because I love the diversity of this community. I want to see our county reach its full potential. I think that the Delco machine that's run this for generations has held us back. It's always been a place where, to get something done, to move forward in business, you had to know a guy. Well, we're not guys, and we're running to change that.
Thank you, Christine, Elaine, and Monica. We will now begin with our first question.
Just to, if I may, I'd like to use my chit before we get started.
Sure. Let me explain the chit. I was, um, each candidate has chits, and those chits can be used, everybody has one chit, I believe, and those chits are an additional 30 seconds, and can use them at any moment in the entire debate, uh, or form. Please.
Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to just clarify a charade that we just heard. We heard the words, "That's not us," and an attempt to divorce this slate from the party as a whole, as it has been. And it's a charade. The fact is, the spokesperson for the Republican Slate and the chair of the party that put that slate in their seats is the poster child for the Republican machine that has led this county for decades. It may be new faces, but it is the same guy behind the curtain. Do not be fooled.
Thank you, Elaine. We will now begin with our questioning. Each candidate will have one minute to answer the questions asked by me. Any candidate from the Republican Party or the Democratic Party can answer, and then there will be a 30-second response by the opposing party. Just to be clear, the Democrats will start with the first question. What are your plans for public transit in Delaware County? And can you tie it in with emissions to reduce congestion from traffic such as I-95 and 476, the blue route?
I can take this. We are very much in support of public transit. We are very much in support of trying to do what we can to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. One of the benefits of winning as Democrats is that we could actually flip control of SEPTA and the SEPTA Board. And by doing that, I think you would find that by being of the same party of the most densely populated area apart from Delaware County and southeastern Pennsylvania, we would see a lot of focus on trying to improve public transit. I think we can also take advantage, as I believe SEPTA is already trying to do, of enhancing the low-emissions fleet replacement. So that is something where you would be seeing a lot of attention. I think there are other public transit initiatives that I'd certainly want to take a close look at, but don't know enough about yet, including a potential line to King of Prussia.
Thank you, Christine. Response.
So, traffic is a huge area in Delaware, a huge problem in Delaware County. And just getting here, I'm sure a lot of you experienced that. It creates anxiety, people can't get to work. What we'd like to do is create a Blue Ribbon Commission on traffic in Delaware County. And what we'd like to do is bring in SEPTA, PENDOT, the Planning Commission, municipalities that are most impacted by traffic right now, like the Radners in Havertowns, and really iron out what the issues are, what the sources are of the problem, and try to come out with some tangible outcomes and results. We're always in favor of public, uh, my time is up.
Thank you, Kelly. The next question is going to be for the Republican Party. Will you pledge to the voters to propose and support ethics reform in county government?
Kelly, Mike, and I are committed to openness and transparency. Every job that's bid in the county will be an open bid. Every position that's filled will be filled by the qualified person that's involved. One thing for sure, when I run my government in Thornbury Township, is we have a diverse board. We have 25 volunteers, and probably seven of them are registered Democrats, a couple are registered independents, and the rest are Republicans. But you can't say that in most of the townships out there. If it's an all-Democrat town, it's an all-Democrat board. It's an all-Republican town, generally, it's an all-Republican board. Not with us. We're committed to openness, we're committed to transparency, and we're committed to putting the right people in the right place for the best job for Delaware County and its residents.
Thank you, Jim. Response.
That sounds good, but in truth, the two Democrats that are on the board right now tried to introduce ethics reform, a completely best-practices, run-of-the-mill ethics package, and the Republicans blocked it. The Republicans would not even allow a hearing on ethics reform. They are part of this party, that is, their leadership driving it. We need real ethics reform, and we need people up on that board that have the courage to pass it, so that we can no longer have gifts being given to and favors being given to our, to our council people, so that we don't have any more bidding without, giving out contracts without bidding.
Thank you.
And that we get disclosure of political donations.
Thank you, Elaine. This next question's for the Democratic Party. Are you in favor of the sale of Chester Water Authority?
That's an interesting question, coming to county council candidates, since we don't have anything to do with the Chester Water Authority. The Chester Water Authority is, is under separate, and the court's going to have to decide who has the authority for that. I'm not in favor of the sale of Delcora, which Aqua is also trying to buy. I'm not in favor of it because they haven't demonstrated that there's a need for it. And when we talk about things like openness and transparency, Delcora is a textbook illustration of a back-room deal. They still haven't come out with the numbers. You might have seen a flyer from our opponents that suggested that it was a bad deal and was going to cost a lot of money. Well, I don't know where they get their numbers from, because the Republicans who run Delcora haven't been willing to share those numbers.
Thank you. Just a reminder, ladies and gentlemen, there's absolutely no recording. Response, please.
I am not in favor, we are not in favor of the Chester Water Authority takeover by Aqua, because it does not benefit the ratepayers. That's first and foremost. It's the taxpayers and the ratepayers in this county. That's who we're there to protect. The Chester Water Authority deal has zero impact on the ratepayers' pockets whatsoever, so we're not in favor of that sale. Thank you.
Can I use, can I use my chit?
Please.
I think that's a really interesting response that our opponents have brought up, because they kept saying that Delcora was a good deal. My problem with the Delcora deal is that I don't think it's going to benefit the ratepayers. These deals typically don't benefit the ratepayers, because in addition to paying all of the capital expenses that a municipal authority would have to pay, you have to pay a profit to the shareholders of the private company that's acquiring it. That's the problem that a lot of the Chester Water Authority stakeholders have with the sale of the Chester Water Authority. Why don't they have the same problem with the sale of Delcora?
Thank you. The next question's for the Republican Party. How committed are you and your party to transparent bidding processions in regular county-to-contracts?
Mr. President? Can you say that again? Same question.
Processes. I apologize. Thank you. How committed are you and your party to transparent bidding processes in regular county contracts?
Well, as Jim had mentioned earlier, we are open, we are up for open bidding and full transparency, openness, accessibility of our government if elected. We think that a lot better could be done, competitive bids are better for everybody. We're trying to bring costs down, as we had said. So we do think that it needs to be looked at carefully, and it takes more time and effort to do so, but we think that it's worth the while to do it.
Thank you. Response.
Well, we just heard in opening statements to pay attention to what we do and not, not what we say. And I'd like to point out that the Republican Slate had the opportunity to show that they really believed in transparency when the Delcora sale was put forward. That deal was done behind closed doors without fitting, and this slate fully supported it, and got fully behind it. They got right in line with their party and got behind that sale. That is not believing in transparency. If you believe in transparency, there is no way that you can support the way that process went down.
Thank you. Next question. This is for the Democratic Party. What is your position on deprivatizing the county prison?
All three of us are very much in favor of deprivatizing the county prison. I want to point out that, as a moral matter, I don't think any shareholder should be making a profit off of incarcerating our citizens. As a practical matter and a financial matter, we spend far more to maintain the private prison than our neighboring counties do, including Montgomery County, which is considerably larger than we are and has a larger prison. It spends several million dollars less than we do to pay GEO. And finally, I think it's important to understand that there are some government functions that are probably better managed by the government. I happen to think this is one of them, and I think that the recent action taken by county council after the urging of the two Democrats on that body to opt in to a modern prison board makes a lot of sense, and will bring the contracting authority back to the county.
Thank you. Response.
Our team has toured the prison. I've attended all of the prison board of inspectors' meetings. I attended the Phoenix Report meeting, and we attended a meeting with the Delco Coalition for Prison Reform. Really, subcontracting medical services and food services is very common for prisons. We subcontract one more service in Delaware County, and that is security. And I understand the philosophical difference, and I'm very aware of the issue. We support the formation of the new jail oversight board. It's much more for transparency and oversight, transparent accountability, excuse me. And we really want to look closely at the vendor and the contract and management of that and seeing how we can improve it. But the overall due diligence required, and this question is about cost, benefit, and risk, and all of those need to be looked at closely with the new oversight board.
Thank you, Mike. Just a reminder to all the candidates, I would like for everyone to respond at some point to each, to a question. The next question is for the Republican Party. How can you improve the security and safety of students who go to public high schools in this county?
Listen, I think it starts with having a strong DA and a county council that's committed to our law enforcement and to making our citizens safe. I think what we're seeing is a creep from Philadelphia, where there's this leniency, this complacency towards crime, and a favoritism towards those committing the crimes. I don't want to see that creep in Delaware County. It's not safe for our children. I very much like the fact that my children can walk to the ballfields, and my neighbors are looking out for her, and that's what Delaware County is all about, about community and neighbors and looking out for one another, and very much like to keep that instilled here. The ideologies from Philadelphia, you know, I don't mean to sound repetitive, but they're slowly making their way into Delaware County, and we're seeing the repercussions. Crime is up there by 27 percent. There are real repercussions to being lenient on crime. So, we would, that extends to our schools as well.
Thank you. Response.
I think in order to help make our schools safer, the county could be helping by providing more grant support, so that schools can go after things like the Save Schools Grant, also providing support to municipalities such as Chester and Upper Darby and the larger municipalities, so we can provide more, safer schools and safer environments for our students to get to those schools.
To finish up Monica's time, that us-versus-them language that we just heard sounds a lot like fearmongering to me. The fearmongering that comes out of the Republican Party.
Ladies and gentlemen, no clapping, please.
Why is he clapping? Why is he clapping? I'm questioning.
Are candidates allowed to complete other people's time?
Every, how it was, um, everybody has 30 seconds before the timer goes off. At the, when, at the table, when we were discussing how this was going to go, the questions and responses were going to be to a specific party, and that party was going to answer it or respond to the question in the time that was allowed, that was allotted. Excuse me. Next question.
I did have one more sentence, and that was, "There is no place for that in our county."
Thank you. For the next party. What is your position on the Delcora sale? I believe this is the, who had the last question?
They, they responded.
The Republicans got the schools question, we had the response.
Great. So this will be the Democrats' question. What is your position on the Delcora sale?
I think we've already made the Delcora sale pretty clear. I would like to just follow up briefly on what we just heard. I don't think there's any reason to talk about what's going on in Philadelphia or Philadelphia creeping out here. I don't like the dog whistles that go along with that, and I would ask that we talk about what's going on in Delaware County and how we can improve things in this county.
Thank you. Response.
Yeah, listen, everybody wants clean water. We all, we all have the same ideology when it comes to that. With the Delcora sale, there was government mandates that came down that was going to cost the ratepayers $1.2 billion. From that $1.2, the majority of that was to fix the infrastructure in Philadelphia. So there was a decision made, and the decision that I appreciated was that the money from the sale goes into a fund just for the ratepayers to be able to protect them so that their rates aren't increased over the sale of Delcora. 10 years.
Thank you. The next question is going to be for the Republican Party. The county has a problem with stray animals. What is your plan to address this problem?
Thank you. Actually, that was a press release that we put out really early on in our campaign. We understand that there's a problem. When we visited and toured the prison, we found out that there was a full canine license there at the prison grounds. And speaking to the people in charge, speaking to the And speaking to the people in charge, speaking to the inmates, we floated the idea of bringing it all under one roof, having the animals brought out as part of rehabilitation for the inmates so that they're not in their cells all day. And it gives them an opportunity to work with the animals and maybe take them home in an adoption agency because obviously the average stay at the Delaware County prison is 40 days. What better way to go home after 40 days is you grow attached to an animal, and it solves two problems. It solves the problem of the stray animals across the county, and it solves, it solves issues inside, inside the prison where it gives them an opportunity to work with an animal, work with others in a controlled environment, and help with their rehabilitation.
Thank you. I just want to remind the lady in the back that there's going to be absolutely no recording of this event. Thank you. Response, please.
So this is just another example of how the county has dropped the ball and is not coordinating with its municipalities as it should. And so what we see is we see a problem that now has gotten to the point where it's bubbled over, and it's a massive problem at the county level because we are not coordinating, and as a county, we are not helping our municipalities the way we should be.
Thank you. Next question. Would you oppose or not a detention center for immigrants in Delaware County? This is for the Democratic Party. Did you have the last one? Who had the last question? I'm sorry.
They started.
Great. So the Democratic Party. Would you oppose or not a detention center for immigrants in Delaware County?
You know, the really interesting thing about this is under the private prison that's currently operated here, the county has nothing to say about whether or not there's a private detention center. We already have one. GEO has a contract with ICE. Now, one of the good things about the oversight process is the county can take back contractual oversight of a, of the private prison. I think if we take back that private oversight, certainly if I'm on county council, I am not in favor of having an immigrant detention center here. So I think that that is something, another very nice side benefit of opting into Title 61. But I do think that it is not in our place here to be incarcerating people or splitting up families, and I don't want to be a part of it in Delaware County.
Thank you. Response.
So I, listen, we believe again in a strong DA and a strong county council who protects our citizens. So that being said, I do believe that our municipalities and our law enforcement should work with the federal government to take people off the street who are here illegally. I would say that, you know, as far as specifically a detention center, I'm not sure if that's at this point a county-level decision to be made. That's more working with our, the federal government and creating whatever system that would look like. But with that, I believe we need to work with the municipalities. We're not a sanctuary city like Philadelphia.
Thank you for that. The next question is going to be for the Republican Party. I live in a dense part of the county. Please explain why protection of open space will benefit areas of the county that are already built up.
Thank you. We do have an open space plan, which is actually going to be part of our economic development plan. The county is very diverse, as you said. On the western end of the county, there is property to be, to be bought, and a plan has to be put in place to be able to partner up with those local municipalities and take care of and increase the property values because you're buying open land. On the eastern end of the county, we're all for buying up pocket parks, rehabilitating pocket parks, rehabilitating storefronts to put more businesses back in those, in those spots to be able to create a tax base. We're not about taking private property away. We're not about, like in Upper Darby right now, they're trying to take the Clifton Fields, the last piece of open space that's available. They've already taken one, and they're looking to take the last piece that's available. You want your children to have a nice park to play in, no matter where you live across this county. Our open space plan will do that for you.
Thank you. Response.
Actually, open space, protection of greenways, trails are exponentially more valuable in denser communities. All of the benefits of these assets are multiplied there. They, open space and, and trailways, they have economic benefit, they bring economic activity, they bring up the value of properties all surrounding these assets. They also negate the negative consequences of overdevelopment, of which we are all familiar, like flooding and traffic.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to, I'd like to use one of my chip, please.
Please.
I've been in office for 16 years. Of those 16 years, we've purchased double-digit open space, pieces of property in Thornbury Township. So you're preaching to the choir when it comes to that. But I find it odd that one of your running mates is looking to take away the last piece of open space on the eastern end of this county, as you say, it's so valuable, but why would you just take it away?
I would like to use my chip.
Please.
Thank you. So we are actually, we are actually using that land to make the land better and for our children in our district who have been ignored for years and have not had the resources that they need because the state hasn't provided it, and we are actually making that open space better for the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is going to be for the Democratic Party. We've heard a great deal of talk lately about our 911 system on outdated, excuse me, on how our 911 system is outdated and needs to be upgraded. What are your positions on moving to a modern system regardless of or taking into consideration the cost of such a system?
So for eight years in Radnor, I was the chair of the Public Safety Subcommittee. So I'm very familiar with supporting our first responders with their needs. Our county, under Republican leadership, has failed our first responders. They have been working without a working radio system for years, and they have been begging for a new radio, radio system. In 2016, a Fullcroft officer went down, and he got shot seven times and could not radio for help. We will make the investment. We will not just do photo ops like our predecessors on the, in the Republican leadership. We will make sure the resources are available, and we will support our first responders. And that is why the Fraternal Order of Police endorsed the three Democratic candidates because they know who is going to walk the walk and give them the resources they need to keep them safe so they can protect us.
Thank you. Response.
Yes, we visited the 911 center. We're aware that there's a problem, but is everybody aware that there's two Democrats that are sitting on the board currently of the five? So for the last two years, nothing's been done on that side of it. That being said. That being said.
Thank you.
That being said, we are 100% committed to taking care of the 911 center, bringing it up to where, to where it needs to be today, tomorrow, and not just then, but into the future. We will work hard, we will work with our law enforcement, and we will create a much better radio system for Delaware County.
Thank you. The next question is going to be for the Republican Party. Would you approve of our county DA starting or joining Chester County's criminal investigation of the Sunaco Pipeline?
I'll answer this because of the six people sitting up here. I actually have a pipeline that runs through my township. We deal with this on an everyday basis, and it should be dealt with just like we've been dealing with it in our town. You have to hold the operator accountable. We are all for, for the development of, of the economics and what it brings economically to the entire county. However, there's no substitute for safety. And that being said, there was an issue with, with a, with a barrier that was supposed to be done. We shut Sunaco down for 12 months. 12 months we shut them down, let them work until it was engineered correctly, done correctly, and it was done for the safety of the residents. The next thing we're doing is we're trying to get monitoring systems done, and we're trying to work with the state legislature at that time to get, to get the user, I mean, the actual operator to pay for those systems because they're costly. But we've been out ahead of the curve. No other municipality has done that, and we're doing it now, and we're committed to pushing the safety factor, everything that we can for our residents.
Thank you. Response.
Our priority is safety. We fully support the moratorium that county council voted on earlier this year, and our goal is to make sure that any pipeline activity is conducted in a way that is both safe in the performance of it and is done at a time when the county and the surrounding area has a, has an appropriate safety plan in place. I would point out that going forward, if there is to be any further pipeline work, I think it's really important to make sure the process is addressed upfront so the jobs aren't stopped.
Thank you, Christine. This next question is for the Democratic Party. What would you do to include the city of Chester and its residents in our county to a greater degree?
Well, I will say this. Under, in past, recent past history in Delaware County, the southeastern section of our county has not gotten their due. And they have not been represented, they have not been at the table when decisions are made, they have not gotten their share of R cap funding, which is really the meat of, of good investment. And this, this slate is committed to making sure that the assets and the resources that we get from federal and state government are spread out evenly in the, around the county and given to those communities who have the most need. And Christine is going to finish.
I would just like to point out that if part of the goal is to include all corners of our county, we have to listen to them and we have to listen to their needs. The recent county council meeting, if you want to go watch the tape, it wasn't yesterday's meeting, it was the one two weeks ago, listen to the attitude that the Republicans on that county council had towards a request to put in LED streetlights in Chester. It was appalling.
Thank you, Christine. Response.
First, I spend a lot of time in Chester. I volunteer at the St. Mary's Episcopal Church Food Cup once a month. I volunteer with City Team, I volunteer with the Boys and Girls Clubs of Chester. I think this is a big opportunity for outreach from the county. We can have meetings around the county, not just in media, but out and about in the county, have our, have our county council meetings out there. Look out for them for community development block grants to do better in their county for economic development, revitalization, and jobs and opportunities. I've also been at Career Link, Career Link down in Chester, spent an afternoon there. So very good to connect with it and really look out for it and understand the issues and concerns.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Our next question is for the Republican Party. Will you use your party affiliation as a basis to return employees in county positions, excuse me?
So listen, we hear about this time and again, and it's just this drumbeat, drumbeat, drumbeat with no factual data to support it. Okay? If we're going to talk about, you know, partisanship and, and party-playing activities in the courthouse, it doesn't exist. If you want to talk about cronyism, let's talk about it. Monica Taylor, you created a director communications position at the Upper Darby School District. You appointed a person as a political favor to a state legislator who had no qualifications for that position, a six-figure salary. That person's so unqualified that you engage in a contract with Magnum Marketing and for professional development for that individual at $4,000 a month. Okay? She's making six-figure salary and then receiving $4,000 a month in professional development. As a taxpayer in Upper Darby who's already overtaxed, I find that egregious. I find it particularly offensive to the Upper Darby school teacher who has to crowdsource funds for school supplies that you're spending that kind of money for political favors. So no, we would not be doing that practice.
Thank you. Response.
Yes. So I'm going to answer the question that you said, but I am going to address that that decision was actually a bipartisan decision that was made by all of the members of the Upper Darby School District, School Board in regards to the county. What we see at the county is 93% of the employees of the county are registered Republicans, and only 39% of the counties are actually voters are Republican. And so we can see there that there is a clear disconnect where, for some reason, the majority of the people who are working for the county as it is are registered with a certain party.
Thank you. The next question is for the Democratic Party. Do you have a plan to revitalize mature communities?
Oh yes, I'll take that one. Yes, we do have our economic development plan that we came out with.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. For the Democratic Party.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I flipped it on myself. Yeah. Ready to go.
Economic development is one of the primary focuses of this slate, and our camp, our county, under Republican, Republican leadership, has been extremely weak and reactive on this. By, by way of comparison, Chester County has 40 people full-time working on their Economic Development Council, and they spend over $6 million a year. Those people are working all day, every day to bring jobs to Chester County and to keep them there. In Delaware County, we have six people working, and they spend under $1 million. It's a goal of ours. There is so much potential here. Up and down the corridor of 291, that, there is so much underutilized land there, and there is an incredible workforce, incredible transportation facilities. We should be working, the money that you spend on economic development, you make back in spades by attracting innovative industry to these places where we need it, and that is what we are going to focus on.
Thank you. Mike, would you like to respond?
I would very much like to respond.
Please.
I'm an eager guy, passionate man. First of all, Chester County, it's a private, not a county, in, organization that does that business development. We did a 49-town, one Delco tour, did it multiple times. The culmination of that, the capstone, that was our economic development plan that we came out with just after Labor Day. If it's so important to them, they just came out with it yesterday, and it looks a lot like ours. So imitation is a source of flattery, as they say. Our economic development plan is very detailed in terms of revitalizing mature communities, in terms of starting a land bank to take vacant properties and turn them into tax-generating hubs, competing regionally, putting our economic development and.
Thank you, Mike.
Planning commission and workforce development under one roof.
Thank you, Mike. The Republican Party, this is your, this question is for you. What is your position regarding the Mariner East Pipeline?
Cover this question. Want to try that one over?
We've done that one?
Yep.
I'll pick another one.
I can answer it again.
No, no, no. In the face of great opposition, name one thing that you created. Talk about the opposition. In the face of great opposition, name, skip that one, too?
That sounds like a question I would write.
I'm just reading what I was given.
Are you sure I didn't write that question to confuse you?
Excellent.
Here we are. There are significant economic differences between communities across the county. What are your plans to provide equitable economic development across the entire county? That's a better one.
And it's us this time?
That is for you.
All right, again, I continue with the economic development plan. I covered a lot about revitalizing mature communities, and we also with that have facade improvements and streetcapes, streetscapes and pocket parks that Jim had talked about with development block grants. We also look to maximize the waterfront with capitalizing on federal opportunity zones and project coordination, again, that all under one roof to put everybody together and work with the municipalities to make sure that we're looking out for all of them and throughout the county. And we walked and talked and met with people and sat down and had work sessions with all kinds of folks at different municipalities about opportunities to collaborate, network and collaborate and come together and do that. Small business development is something that we really need to bolster in the county. We need to recruit, and we need to retain. We need to retain the businesses that we have as well as have a regional and national marketing plan that can pull business to Delaware County because business is the center of the community ecosystem of business, government, education, and nonprofit. Without business, we don't have any government, we don't have any education, we won't have any nonprofits. So it is that mission critical to our plan as well as keeping a low tax base, which is an environment, a climate that will invite companies to stay here and come here.
Thank you, Mike. Response.
I think one of the ways to tackle this is to put more focus on workforce development. We need to take down the silos that are within the county and make sure that we are all working together in order to improve the workforce development in our, in our communities and make sure that those people, our students, have access to job skills and job training and that our residents who are underemployed or unemployed also have access to job training.
I'd like to use my chip here, please.
Please.
Thank you. So yes, that is, that is an area of concern. I'd like to also access and, and give more opportunities to our immigrant population, which we have a large segment, and our special needs population who wants to be part of the workforce. But Monica, you mentioned this workforce development. We have a program at Upper Darby High School, 124 students out of 3,800 actually participate in it. So if it is a goal of yours on a county-wide level, I'm not understanding why it's not being implemented on a school district level.
Thank you. The next question is for the Democrat. Will you commit to purchasing or leasing new voting machines as soon as possible so that poll workers and the public will have adequate time to train on them before next year's primary?
That process has already been well underway. The voting machines have been selected by the Board of Elections. What I'm not entirely clear on is the extent to which it's county council that contracts for them rather than the Board of Elections under the way our charter is structured. But certainly, I am a. charter is structured. But, certainly, I am a, and I, and I believe I speak for our entire slate, when I say we are all in favor of having new voting machines that offer a paper trail and making sure that they are both on order and that machines are available to train folks as promptly as possible. And, make sure that folks have a chance to come in and do an expo, like was done, to check out the machines and can see what they are like before Election Day.
And, to just add on to that, on a related topic, it is one of our top priorities, to make it easier and more convenient for people to vote. Anybody who has ever had to deal with the Bureau of Elections under Republican rule knows it's a nightmare.
Thank you.
It's hard to run for office. It's hard to vote. We are going to change that.
Thank you, Elaine. Response?
Okay. I, I personally attended the expo to check out all the voting machines, and the forum that was presented at the county council. It was very thorough. It was very interesting. A lot of people were in attendance. A lot of older people were in attendance, and we have a whole senior commission that we could talk about as well. But, in limited time, I think it's important to recognize and appreciate that everybody needs electronic and/or manual. I think that hybrid model is the best decision, and I think that that needs to be rolled out, communicated as best as possible, and get out of media, not just come in, having people come to media to do it, but get out on a roadshow to show the new voting machine and make sure that people are comfortable and ready to come out and vote, including people with special needs and, and that.
Thank you. The next question is for the Republican Party. I do believe we have time for two more questions. "The Delaware County Lead Poisoning Prevention Coalition reports that 400 children under six were found with lead poison in their blood. If elected, would you seek to allocate more resources to, to protect Delaware County children from lead poisoning?"
Well, of course. I think government provides key functions. One of them is to make sure to provide, protect our citizenry, and that would be an obvious yes. I would obviously put more resources towards that endeavor. If you see what's been happening in Philadelphia right now, they're having a huge problem because that's been overlooked for a number of years, and now schools are being closed and children being shuffled around. So, sure, I would like to be proactive with that, like that, unlike Philadelphia, and take an active, proactive role. Other than that, I'm not, I'm not really sure how to address it, other than it would be important to protect our children. I think that's an obvious yes.
Thank you. Response?
Delaware County is one of the largest counties in the entire country that doesn't have a health department. We need a public health department to better coordinate programs and initiatives. We don't have a health department, and it's failed us in addressing issues that would come up similar to this. We are currently leaving money on the table that could be helping in this issue if we had a health department.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the health department, real quick, just to use my chit.
Please.
With the, the studies out with Johns Hopkins about whether we should have a, a health department, I think that we really need to consider that and let that take its course before we commit to doing it. And, if they recommend that that we do it, that's something that we would, we would implement.
I believe this is, would be the final question, and it's, "What are some innovations you would implement to control costs and stabilize taxes?" It's going to be for the Democratic Party.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that one more time?
"What are some innovations you would implement to control costs and stabilize taxes?"
Well, first and foremost, we are going to take control, back our government from the clutches of a party machine. And, we are going to stop spending on the things that we don't need to be, that we're wasting money on, like patronage employment, like giving out contracts to people that don't bid for them. We are going to reprioritize our spending, and we are going to start to fund some of the services that we do need, like a public health department, like a robust economic development program, like a meaningful open space department, like a well-run prison that is not making money off of its prisoners. We're going to do all of that, and we're not going to raise taxes, because we're going to have enough money from the, the misspent funds. Right now, we pay for 21 full-time attorneys, that they, almost all of them have separate jobs, their own firms, that they have robust practices in. $1.4 million a year we spend on that. Last year, we spent $500,000 on an RFP for a new prison contractor.
Thank you, Elaine.
This is money that can be better spent on the services we need.
Thank you, Elaine. Response?
Yeah, go, go.
I have a hard time following that. Um, listen, we're about people over party, and I think our opponents have demonstrated time and again, that's not always the case, with giving positions to people that, that aren't qualified, as well as taking advice from groups that harbor pedophiles, as well as defending, defending...
Let her finish. Let her finish.
Defending fellow commissioners and voting in favor of keeping them, even though there's an investigation about child molestation, and, and voting along party lines to keep that person in place because of partisanship. We are party, we are people over party, and that's that.
Thank you, Kelly. We will now listen here fro, excuse me, we will now have the closing statements from all parties. We're going to start with the Democratic Party, and each candidate is going to have 30 seconds for closing statements. Plea-
I want to once again thank the League for organizing this debate, and Villanova University for hosting us, and to all of you for being here tonight. Our residents deserve a government that works for them, not just a handful of political insiders. Under generations of Republican rule, too many of our residents have been left behind. Delco has one of the highest unemployment rates in the region, and we continually lag behind our neighbors on issues ranging from public health to economic and workforce development. If you elect us, we will fight every day to get real value for our families and move Delco forward. I'm Monica Taylor, and if you believe like I do that it's time for a change in Delaware County, I ask for your vote on November 5th.
Um, as our team has crisscrossed Delaware County, we've heard a lot about taxes and public-
I'm sorry, Mike. We're going to do the closing with, and we're going to do all of the Democratic Party, and then we're going to go over to the Republican Party for closing.
I understood the rules to be one person each side was going to close.
Um, closing statements. Sorry, is that right? Everybody in the-
The protocols keep changing.
Sorry. It, it was just everybody on one party, and then the, your party.
Okay, we're good? What have we, as residents, gotten out of 150 years of absolute unchecked power from the Republican Party? We have gotten higher taxes than any of our neighbors and far fewer services, really important services that we need. It's time for a change, and this slate will bring that change. And, we're going to bring it without raising taxes because we won't need to. I'm Elaine Schaefer. I'm asking for your vote on November 5th for county council.
Well, tonight, we've been attacked as tax-and-spend liberals and on other basis by people who don't put party above people. But, the reality is that our opponents are up here on the stage tonight because they were handpicked by the leader of the Republican Party, the party that has given us higher taxes than any other collar county with fewer services for generations. We can do better than that. We can put government to work for the people of Delaware County instead of for a party and that party's friends and family. My name is Christine Ruther. I'm asking for your vote for Delaware County Council on November 5th.
Thank you. We will now hear from the Republican, we're going to say of all applause to the end. Let's, we're almost there, I promise. Now, we're now going to hear from the Republican Party. Please.
I'm Mike Morgan. I responded to a broader call for candidates. I'm new. I'm fresh. I'm bold. I'm not tied to the past. I'm not tied to the present. I have everything to do with the future. I bring a business and consulting background and experience, and I'm ready, willing, and able to give full time to this effort if elected. I am retired as a businessperson, and I serve on five nonprofit boards, down from nine nonprofit boards, to focus on this campaign and then if elected. We have crisscrossed the county. We've met with lots of people, as I've said earlier. What they're concerned about are taxes and public safety. They do not want to become Philadelphia. They do not want to become Washington DC. So, we're three new, fresh, prospective people that will come together and make great decisions for Delaware County. Thank you. We appreciate your consideration for voting for us on, on November 5th.
I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. I want to thank the women, the League of Women Voters for putting this on. I want to thank Villanova University for hosting this, this great event. I want to thank our opponents as well for being here along with us and letting the people of Delaware County hear some of our ideals. Our main concern is that what we heard around town is taxes. We, I have never raised the property tax in 16 years in office, and I don't intend to start now. One of the reasons I, I decided to run with Kelly and Mike is because they say, they, they have the same ideology I do. No taxes. No taxes. No taxes.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
I guess my question would be, if the taxes are so high in Delaware County, why did each of you raise taxes in your capacity when you're elected officials? My start in the community began with building a playground for children with autism in Upper Darby Township because the school district was not providing for them. I didn't demand money. I didn't ask them to raise taxes to provide that. I hit the ground running, got some parents involved, and we built that playground with grit, and we just got it done. And, I believe as a county councilperson, we would do the same thing. We wouldn't be reaching into your pockets and asking for more money to do more. That would be resourceful and, and efficient with execution.
Thank you, Kelly. Ladies and gentlemen, a warm round of applause for all of our candidates: Mike Morgan, Jim Rafe, Kelly Colvin, Monica Taylor, Elaine Schaefer, and Christine Ruther. Thank you, ladies and-
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming out, and good night.